Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the board of selectmen for Tuesday, July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Like the trouble pledge allegiance, please. Anybody ever have a secret fear you're gonna forget the words?
Say it so many times.
Um, do we have any public comments? Would you have one item of correspondence? Now, this was um, this was actually from a memo that I did to all the boards regarding executive sessions. Uh, it's a reminder that whenever a board or enters into an executive session, it best practice to indicate somewhere where the public can wait outside. Location should be far enough from the meeting room to ensure privacy for the executive session, but also with a nice side of the door if possible. Because when come out, they opening the door is a signal that they can come back in from executive session and public can come back. If there's an area that's not near the door, um, it's a good idea to go get those folks, but if they're right outside, there's no obligation for anybody to run, get them. Uh, this best practice will help protect us from our protect sensitive information, but also ensure maximum transparency. So that this is the fourth time I share with all the boards and try to make sure we put it ours. Um, as far as the first secretary report, um, obviously a lot going on right now. Um, I think, I think in the, in the big scheme of things, uh, you know, I'm finishing up reviews on all the employees. Unless we haven't talked about, but we did do performance reviews this year. Uh, I did it in such a way that uh, it's a benchmarking situation, right? Cause I'm the new guy in the block. I haven't been here long time. We've really focused on, you know, finding, I guess, the um, resources employees need, understanding where they're gonna go, what their goals are with the organization, all that sort of stuff. So uh, I'll be finishing up those reviews here. Um, I've done them all and just I'm writing them up in the next couple of weeks or so. As far as uh, you know, big picture stuff, we're still waiting on our Highlands Town designation. We should be hearing about that soon. Um, we are uh, better approach to do a number of different things with West Call. I, at some point, I probably will just put together, um, start putting together something written like a list of things like the actual report. When, when Matt was doing it, did he do a report every meeting or did it was it? We were talking about this. Did he do it every quarter or did he do it every meeting?
He brought us, you know, what was going on and that's all. But okay, nothing more.
Okay. Cause I wanna do a better job of, of now bringing the feedback, cause we kind of skipped it a few times. Um, any questions about what she burned going on down or you want that you can comment on?
The Wildcats.
Wildcats. Yeah, yeah, we did. We were, you know, we're really excited to have the uh, to have the Cal Ripley tournament.
Semi-finals Wildcats, Buffalo Wildcats, one, two games. So tomorrow they start.
Yeah.
It's insane.
That is very cool. All right, which has the game tomorrow? Okay.
And I'll say it's been really good businesses. I mean, um, what is that Capri have like eating board doing my everyone that's like, you know, going to restaurants was really, really good thing about it. Like I said, we got chosen for that.
Okay. So moving on to the uh, next item, um, I'd like a motion to approve the board of second regular meeting minutes from June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Any discussion? Saying none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. I move that we uh, accept the board of selectmen special meeting minutes of June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. And there's uh, this is very straightforward. All over here, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Do what opposed? I'm most care. And uh, I'll do this way again. I'll ask for your motion to approve the board segment special meetings on July fifth, two thousand twenty-three. So. Thank you. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Like a motion to consider the approval of the public hearing minutes in July fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Ooh.
Second. I do have one item. Yeah, I do have one item. Um, when um, when Mr. Boyle was speaking, um, I don't know if we, I think it was a mistake that he said for lot three, the price for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is reflected in the meeting, the lot was actually seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So what I choose will, will, when we do this, we'll approve the uh, the minutes with that amendment. It's accepted.
To make, make a motion to amend.
So I make a motion to uh, how about I do this? Yeah, I make a motion to uh, amend your motion to accept the minutes with the change of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and seven hundred twenty-five thousand. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Oppose? Okay, first off, um, I'd like a motion for discussion for approval of mobile license plate readers for the local police department.
Second.
Okay. I'll make the motion. You say gonna up for discussion. Our favorite? Aye. Okay. So what you have before, um, the, the genesis of this came when I was with Lieutenant Durkin uh, at one of the chief's events, basically. And at the time, we had talked about, you know, we had the illegal tire dumpings and some of that stuff going on. And we were looking for a way, you know, to catch some of those folks and maybe with a mobile camera. That grew into a bigger discussion about a camera with a license plate reader capability, not only for something like that, but also, you know, as you know, we've had a number of instances up on Route six where people come into town with a stolen vehicle, the Rob target, you know, or shoplift, whatever it is. In fact, we had one a couple of weeks ago where um, basically one of our officers chased down uh, a shoplifter, tackled him, found out he had an anchor ankle monitor on. He was on parole for murder.
Oh.
So the guy went back to jail for twelve years for stealing Legos. But the point is, you know, we have a lot of folks who will, you know, M O is come in town with stolen car, uh, try to steal stuff and then we can't chase them, right? Because the way the laws are. This is an idea that if we were able to put a couple of these or mobile, we're out of it. They can get an F-one hit. I guess they call it when the stolen car comes into town. And you know, our guys could and girls could catch up with them at Target or wherever, um, where we think they may be. So that is the uh, the whole idea. Um, we would be sending this on to the board of finance. You know, for now, the um, the you'll get the amount of it was a
What do you?
Yeah.
Believe so?
Yeah, actually, by our sins, we would buy them. And then there's a um, to use the software. Yeah, the entire, the, yeah, if we, oh, there's a lease option, I see what you mean.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lease and a purchase. So I guess it's your choice.
Yep. I only knew of the purchase item, the purchase option, because I knew they were eleven thousand each. Um, I guess I think I'd be more inclined to wanna purchase them, but whatever, what are your thoughts about the topic in general?
For the special. Are, are these car mounted or the uh?
They're standing. They're standalone, they're solar powered. Um, you literally park them up in Stony Hill or out in Trow Bridge or wherever, um, Greenwood. I, I think, you know, one of the thoughts was, was utilizing more in Stony Hill, because that's where a lot of folks come in. Um, but there's a lot of different things we can do with it, wherever we put them.
Are, are they readily movable?
Yes. Yeah.
I think if you look that they're planning on using them on poles. They have their own poles that you purchase with it.
Yeah. Will it run on solar market?
Yes. I don't know if you got, if you look at the, you could see the pictures. They sent the street things. You could see what they look like. They're not, they're not real big and they're not tall.
Yeah. They can be relocated. That's the, that's the key.
Yeah, I think that's the idea. Yeah.
Are you on the lease, on the lease option, does it cover if they're vandalized?
I don't know.
Does this vandalism toll?
No.
No, I don't, I don't think it does. I, I did, I read it quickly. I didn't see anything about that. The only thing that I saw, because the terms and conditions for both the lease and the purchase are identical. The only thing that I saw that I thought we may want to ask about a change is uh, they want jurisdiction to be in North Carolina. I, I'd prefer not to have to bring some kind of suit or defend something in North Carolina. Think it should be here in Connecticut. They are authorized to do business in Connecticut. I checked with the Secretary of State. Think the only thing that I don't know, Dan, I, I don't, how many are you talking about? One?
We've, we've talked about two. But maybe one is what we do.
I mean, my, just my feelings on it would be I would considering it leasing it for a year, just seeing on how successful and how useful the item is. Um, then I have a little bit of a background as well, unfortunately, so I just a little. Uh, I mean, I, I would suggest exploring the lease option, finding out, you know, before we vote on it, finding out, you know, what happens if it's vandalized, does it come with insurance? You know, it would be very helpful to go through that. Um, cause I mean, obviously you all know on for public safety, but you know, this is right for Bethlehem. I'd like to try it out and see, you know, is the intended use, is it worth it? You know, so we don't own something that, you know, you're gonna have to update licenses all the time and you know, we put out, I mean, forty-eight hundred dollar expenditure for the police to check it out and see if they like it for a year. To me, if, if that's correct, that you're leasing it for eighty-eight hundred dollars and that's all it is, I think that would be a bad idea. Just test the program and get some feedback from the police and see how they enjoy using it and did it, you know, work. I mean, you know, if we have it for a year, we've got nothing from it. I mean, it's something we wanna add. If we have it and it's useful and, you know, like we said, illegal dumping areas, we're now getting plates. So you have narrowed down suspects and things like that. You know, might be a great thing, but maybe, maybe we just get some information on the lease and maybe a little feedback from Chief Wagner, if he feels that a lease would be a good option to try it out for a year and take it from there.
Okay.
And just add that, um, other departments in the area kind of needs and other.
Okay. So probably the way to go on this then is um, I make a motion that we table the consideration of licensed bike readers for the next regular meeting.
Sure. Maybe you got some, Marty, maybe you could talk to the company and find out about vandalism and things with the leads, how that works.
Yeah, I, I will, but my guess is if we're legitimately leasing it, I think Kerma would cover most of it. But that's okay. I'll, I'll, I'll try and find out.
Yeah, I, I just, you know, that's my biggest.
Yeah, they're not, they're, they're not very big and I think they would be very easy for somebody with a truck just to
stash it or.
Take them out. Yeah, pretty easy. So uh, I, I, Rich, your question, Rich, about connecting to other departments, I, I think it does. If you look on the quote pages, both of them where it says comments, you'll see it says connects to Danbury E O C. So it must have system that they talk to each other. That's my guess.
So I've, I've made a motion. I'm looking. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? None? Okay, so to my reflection, we're gonna table that to the next regular meeting?
Yes.
Right. Um, I make a motion, we open for consideration and discussion, rather, of uh, replacement vehicle for the paramedics not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Rescuing the second. All, all bear, aye for discussion? Great. All right. So here's what happened. Um, our uh, paramedic vehicle was involved in an accident. Open this back, as I think both of you know, uh, it was in fact a total. It looks like we're going to get uh, forty-nine thousand dollars from Kerma. We have located a replacement at Tahoe, I guess in New Hampshire for forty-four thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars. Um, the other opportunity would be oh, with a Ford product, but probably six months before we would get one. Um, I think we've, the police have said they've had a lot of luck with Tahoes in general.
They seem to like the Tahoes that they put in Troy and then great, great vehicle.
Now, we'll also have to discuss on it. We'll have to add a separate motion. It's gonna be um, it's gonna be ninety-three hundred, excuse me, nine thousand, three hundred dollars for an outfit. Basically, we'll be able to take some of the things off the current vehicle, radios and all that, but the console is different on the inside and the lights on the front were damaged when it was hit. So I think we'll have to do those in two separate.
The insurance won't cover any of the plates.
Um, well, the insurance will get the full amount back. We'll get forty-nine hundred, but it won't cover the lights separately that I know of.
We'll get forty-nine thousand.
Forty-nine thousand.
We're gonna be out.
Four hundred and fifty, four hundred. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So it's, it's, it's uh, you know, the best possible deal.
I love this thought.
I even wrote your, same thing. So what we can do is um, this, I make a motion that we purchase the replacement vehicle or the specs uh, for not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Have a second?
Same.
All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? None? So then what I'll do is um, I'll add a, I'd like a motion to add a second or another agenda item uh, to consideration of the of the warning systems or outfit warning systems in the vehicle. Have a second on the motion?
Same.
And uh, and we're gonna add this to the agenda. We have to add it to the agenda, technically. Um, all in favor of adding to the gender consideration of adding the warning systems in the vehicle?
But same.
All, I, I suppose none? Okay, so what we're looking at here is we're looking at proposal from especially warning systems. Shelter Rock, they, these are uh, the folks they use a lot. Um, for ninety-two hundred forty-four dollars and a cents. Um, yeah, there were a few for, it looks like uh, under the component notes, there were a few four parts that couldn't be transferred. Um, and some of the lights were not compatible, so.
To make a motion to approve an amount not to exceed ninety-six hundred in case they find some small parts brackets, you know, then I want them to come back for.
Yeah.
A ridiculous amount. I mean, I was gonna say not to exceed ninety-six hundred. And you know, Tim, I know Tim very well. He'll agree for us.
Okay. Okay. Sweet second of my day. Okay, uh, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? None, most in place. We're, we're not taking up the big waiver request for the board of education on the agenda. Um, with advice of counsel and after speaking with um, with the board of education, that they actually can do that on their own, the board of education. We're not gonna take up that. Um, I'd like to uh, I'd like to move that we appoint Charles Andrews from Barclay Damon L L P to represent the town of Bethel in the eight thirty G appeal for fourteen Wood and Everly. You have a second?
Second.
Okay. So um, Marty, do you, do you wanna weigh in on um, this since you're our town council?
Yeah. I thought I was muted. I'm sorry. Now, this is, this is the uh, the Whitney Avenue lawsuit, the second one. The first one is still pending. While it was pending, um, the owners and applicants filed another application with planning and zoning and planning and zoning denied that. Um, I think it's a uh, eight dash thirty G application. They denied it and what's happened is uh, the owners went ahead and appealed. So now we have two cases regarding the same properties and the same owners. It only makes sense. Uh, Charles Andrews has represented planning and zoning for the last four or five years and a lot of these suits, he's pretty good at what he does. And um, he was appointed by the board here to represent the town for the first case. It just makes sense that he should be appointed by the, uh, the board for the second case. They're very similar. Uh, and what's happened too is just so you're aware, first council that represented the owners of the property for the first case withdrew. And now this council that was representing uh, the owners is the same one for both cases. So we'll have the same attorneys on both ends. They'll be able to deal with each other, I think, a little bit better under circumstances.
Okay. Any other further inspection? Uh, without our minds, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Oppose? None, motion carries. So next up, um, I'd like a motion to approve the upgrade to the evidence room for the state mandated gun storage and cost not to exceed seven thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay. So basically this came out of the uh, when they did the inspection for their certification here last month, uh, it was noted that they needed to upgrade the evidence room. And that's the invoice you have in front of us for the action saving. We call it the estimate of uh, six thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Note that this was done in uh, expired in June. Uh, was it June twenty-third or something like that? Yeah. Um, my understanding is that the, you know, we're hoping this was said, it's not.
Who did the inspection?
This was um,
This is my question thing?
Kalia.
Accreditation.
Yeah. Yeah, they noticed that there was the issue with the uh, evidence locker for guns.
And that was never picked up prior to the, for the construction and all that?
Uh, no, because I think a lot of these mandates happen, happen post-construction.
This clear, we is we is a certification. It's almost rich if you think about in industry when they do an ISO nine thousand where you use best practices. Yeah. So Kalia is very similar. What it is is you could either be stated Kalia's run through, I believe, the FBI, it's highly accredited. So you get audited as you go through each step of the process. So in order to get accredited, Kalia's saying about the current decision.
Yeah.
That's my current.
Yeah, exactly. And, and, and most everything it claims does is based on best practices.
So that's. Is that, how often is there certification? In Kalia, the state, you get audited every three years. So if you get state accredited, basically your accreditation officer maintains records and everything. And then every three years, the state comes in and does like a big audit. Now that could have changed since I've been, who knows if it's one year. I, I don't really know. I've been out of the game for a little while. But you know, it's done on a a, a basis. You know, they might check in on you from time to time to say, hey, we wanna see this and the accreditation officer maintains all the files, but I mean, this has to do with accreditation. It's not like state of Connecticut, but he's probably already put a ton of money in to get accredited. And so it sounds like, you know, you gotta know it.
Yeah.
Just a, a curiosity question. Is this uh, something new that has about been the uh, feel that, uh, you know, they're updating it or was this something that you may missed over years? Well, no, nobody misses it, Rich. What it is, is, is that you're having an outside agency, you're looking to get accredited. Yeah, no, I, I.
No, I, I think.
What you're looking at, yeah, the last time we got accredited, uh, were they in the new station at the time or is this a new, something new that's come about? Standards might have changed. Yeah, well, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah. My, my understanding is because of the way the rules work, we store a lot more guns than we used to. And when those guns are in evidence, they need to be stored in locked containers. So we didn't have enough room. And that's where, you know, the, the mandates, I mean, I'm assuming they're everything from, you know, restraining orders and things like that. We're now the police have to take possession of guns and move on to them. So we have more guns in our custody. That's why I'm.
Some are held for safekeeping, some are held for evidence.
But they have to be locked, I guess, in these cabinets. And that's what they're putting in. Okay. Yeah. Um, okay, so we have a um, you know, we have a motion to approve the upgrade of the evidence room for the mandated gun storage not to exceed seven thousand dollars. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? All right. May I have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of nine hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents due to overpayment of taxes?
So. Second.
Anything you wanna add? The tax collector, okay.
I honestly don't usually do refunds in July.
Yeah, it's a small amount.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wasn't on those.
No.
Nobody, I know. Nobody, I know.
No reason coming my way.
Uh-huh. Okay, all in favor? Aye. I'd like a motion uh, to improve the abatement of taxes for the Bethel Housing Authority and Augustine Homes for the grant list of October first, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of two hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. So I make a motion? So. For a second? Okay. Do I tell anything?
Um, per Marty's request.
Okay.
He wanted me to explain this. So chime in and by mess up on this one. Um, so with the, the Austin homes and uh, and this Main Street, the low income housing rental properties. They are, um, taxes are abated because they are part of pilot program, which is paying the taxes. Um, so they pay ten percent of the rental income uh, to the town. Uh, which varies from year to year. So you don't know. Renting people they have and and so they stay in this program, which is under the state statute, uh, section eight dash one nineteen K. It in the nutshell.
Okay. Marty, do you wanna say something?
Marty, anything else?
The only thing I was curious is just maybe if you've got a rough idea approximately how much the ten percent rent comes to.
Um, well, uh,
Approximately.
Each the Little C Act, um, so Reynolds Ridge pays about thirty-five hundred um, each a quarter. So that's um,
Fourteen. Fourteen.
It's about eight thousand a quarter. And then Augustana Homes pays about uh, eight thousand a quarter, I believe. No, it was six hundred in quarter. And again, that ranges, it depends on, again, the rental income.
Was two twenty-six. I'm twenty-eight.
Seven-three.
So if, if they were paying taxes, looks like the total assessed value is two hundred and twenty-six thousand on the properties?
No, that would be the tax itself.
Oh, that would be the tax itself.
Yes.
Right. And what do they bring in a month?
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Quarterly. It's broken down to thirty-five hundred, uh, well, thirty-five seventy-seven quarterly, uh, from the two Reynolds Ridge pieces. Well, yeah. So that's about seven thousand. And then uh, eight and ninety-four from Main Street property. And then another uh, sixty-two hundred, I'm sorry, from on Stan Holmes.
Let's roughly twenty thousand or somewhere around that. So.
Sounds like it's around seventy-five or eighty thousand for the year. Big difference.
Yeah.
And we get, we get some of that back?
From the state?
Yeah.
No. It's to be that we did years ago, no more. Hey, what they did was. That's one of the reasons why I wanted Paula to come and explain. You know, what, what we have here is that they've done this with a bunch of programs. Where they start out, um, that. Where to give breaks for different businesses and different things, we've had someone for industrial businesses and things like that. But then what happens after a couple of years? Uh, of them reimbursing us, they pull the rug out. And that's exactly what they did here about ten, eleven, twelve years ago. So what happens is we end up footing the bill for the difference between what it was. And what it now is.
Okay.
Now, I wish Brad was here. Marty, maybe you know, we already calculated this.
Yes, it should be.
It's already been incorporated in the mill.
Yeah. Yes, it's done every year. It's every, it's just that, you know, you've got. And you got two new people on the board here, so I figured you might wanna know exactly.
I have the.
What it's for.
I have an, uh, income statement from Venice Park and what Santa Homes sends me.
But it is benefiting.
Breakdown.
Local senior. Right, I mean, it's a benefit for the town.
Yeah, thank you.
Those are copies, so. They're welcome.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I oppose, none, curious?
Thank you for explaining it.
Thank you, Paula.
Okay. All right. I'd like a, uh, a motion to accept. The two thousand twenty-three controlled deer hunt. Uh, attached schedule and the proposal by the Bethel Fish and Game Club.
You'll move it.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Um. Actually, if you'd like, I'll give you the floor for a moment, you can run through. Not a big picture, we've done this for many years.
We've done this for many, for, for many years, um, last year, um, what we did last year to help. Put see through is. Um, I included the dates on there for the different, um, seasons. We only allow archery and shotgun in Mosworth, we cannot allow rifle. Um, it is to the two properties at Terror Heart and at, um. Chestnut Reservoir. Uh, one of the things the, uh. Last year's selection suggested. Is that we put a sign at the entrance. Just to where, so people are aware that there's, there is hunting allowed on these properties. Um, I did put the signs on. Both ends of Terror Heart and both ends of Chestnut, and I've already spoke to the. Sign gentleman this year, he's going to donate them again. As the dates change by a day or two, so the signs that are there would have to come down and you want to go up. And then we do the sign up, it's here. Um, the first Saturday after Labor Day. Which I have volunteers come and we have. We vet everybody to make sure the town residents, cause you don't need non-town residents here. We do have, uh, them sign a release. The town of any liability. Um, which is notarized, I have a notary, the volunteers, their time comes here, does that. So basically, everything's done for the town clerk. Now, there is stragglers that come in after, but they'll have to go see the town clerk to get them. But you can't get your permits. Without have signed that release form. Plus, one of the things we talked about last year is. There is a state, Connecticut state law that releases the town of any liability. Once you sign that. Commission slip, cause we're considered private land. There is a state law that releases the town also of any liability. And other questions?
Do you, do you inspect where the hunters are putting their stands up?
No stands allowed.
For, of climate, if they don't have to like, let you know where they're gonna set.
They don't have to let us know where they follow this Connecticut state law where they have feet and everything, they have to be in property lines and buildings, I think. But considering that if it's a portable stand, it's not stationary, so there's no. They don't have to get anything approved because it's only there for that one day that they're there. You know, and, and to be honest with you, the amount of. Most of these people, it's a Saturday that they hunt. It's for two and three days, for three months from September. To end of January is the archery season, the gun seasons are only for roughly about two weeks. Other than that, it's just archery. And then no stands are allowed on the property. I should say no permanent structures, how's that, that's a better way there.
Want to discuss him?
No.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. Two hands.
Thank you.
Okay, um. I like a motion for approval of an amendment to the defined benefit plan for the employees of the town of Bethel. To whom it applies. Change thirty-five years contributions to thirty-seven years of service. Your motion?
I will.
Okay, so, um, and where this comes from, and I know we don't have anything on this. Uh, this actually comes from the highway department contract. Uh, what happens is. You get, you get folks who get to a point in their contract where. They're still contributing to the plan. But they're not getting us, anything else out of the plan. And that becomes a problem because really those folks are losing about six percent. Um, so this is something that fixed that, it was negotiated into the, uh, Department of, uh. Uh, Public Works Contract. We're having a department. So really, it's nothing more than just codifying that.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? Say none, um, I will try your lines. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Most in chorus? Um, finally, we have, um. Um, I would like to, I, I like, I'll make a motion actually. Uh, I move that we appoint. Gabriella Hernandez. To the Sustainable Bethel Commission.
Thank you.
So, uh, we have a letter from, uh, Chairman of the Democrat Town Committee. Um, Gabriella Hernandez has been very interested in Sustainable Bethel for some period of time. She's actually gone to some of the meetings, she's paying attention, she's up on what needs to be done. As you know, we're trying to get some more folks on that committee, so, uh, I wholeheartedly endorse. Their request, it was a Democrat seat that they're filling. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, say none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Most in chorus? And I think, um. We'll wrap that tonight, just, uh. I will say, we'll, we'll have some consideration of how we do meetings for the next. What we're gonna do hybrid or what we're gonna do instead of adding that on tonight. You feel like you wanna stay a little longer?
Yeah.
Agenda item?
Yeah.
So, okay, so I, um, I make a motion for discussion. Of, uh, the meeting policy for boards and commissions at Bethel.
So.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so. You know, I, obviously, post-pandemic, we've all been trying to figure out what the best ways for meetings, um, we, we don't have a. A solid standard in the sense that boards and, and have all kind of started doing their own thing. So we've talked about a couple of options that we have. Uh, one would be the full-on hybrid meetings. One would be, um, streaming meetings, so people can see them at home. One could be recorded meetings and you have to be in person. Right? Um, we believe now that meetings need to be recorded. The question is, do we wanna do hybrid, do we wanna do streaming? Um, you have, you have any thoughts on this?
I, I, I think the, the hybrid, we're, you know, we can meet in person or people that could be at home joining the meeting, uh. Uh, if someone's sacred, camp bitters out of town.
Well, there's, yeah, there's the hybrid where they actually speak.
Right.
Speak, and then there's the streaming that they can watch.
No, the hybrid where they participate.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, the only, the only downside to doing everything hybrid. Is that, um, you're in the public comment section. You could end up in more of a public hearings. And we do wanna, we do wanna encourage people to come in person. Or. You know, either come to comment or come or send us correspondence. That's the only other thing we've talked about, it's like, if we do it streaming. You know, obviously, a board member can. Can do it hybrid or, I'd say remote, it doesn't matter. But the question is, do we want the public to give public comment? Online every time for every meeting and every board?
I think you'll have a problem.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying theoretically it'd be problematic for pl- planning and zoning land use. To not have people actually, like a public hearing, one thing. But actually having. If you have multiple, keep people trying to overwhelm the meeting, I guess, uh. They can shut it down. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that. We could solicit. There's a way to solicit public input on it and see what the public wants, I mean.
Yeah.
I think meetings should be open, I mean, I think, you know, you've done a good job of.
Uh-huh.
You know, being very open and transparent with the public in your weekly newsletters, and I think that's. A good thing.
Yeah.
I mean, for our meetings, I think hybrid works very well, I think, you know. Is it possible to leave it to the board's discretion on how, I mean, if planning and zoning says hybrid creates. Hardships for them?
Yeah.
I wonder, does it have to be a set policy under FOI, like, does everyone have to run their meetings the same way?
No, I mean, we can all, we can have a policy that allows boards to choose how they wanna run, as long as they're within FOI rules.
And I wonder if it makes sense to leave it to the individual.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, for us, it doesn't really create any hardship.
Yeah.
For us, I mean, I remember Board of Finance that one year, we took. Tons of comments from online, the budget, remember when COVID first hit, I mean. We sat through and we listened to them all and, you know, if people felt more comfortable being home.
Yeah.
You know, it was understandable.
Well, it certainly drives, you know, people definitely want. Do we see the meetings at home?
Absolutely.
Of course, and that, that, the question is, do we, do we make them hybrid, you know? One of the thoughts I was thinking, and you kind of alluded to it. Maybe we have a public hearing. Maybe the board of selectmen sets a public hearing.
Listen to people's thoughts.
And, and, and get it out there and see what people wanna do. And I think it'd be a good way to solve it and. Cause I think we do have to come up with something just so it's standard. And maybe where we're going.
Yeah, but I think when the, was originally set up, that, uh, each department could do their own. But you, if you're looking for, uh, you know. Round them out for everybody.
Yeah.
During COVID, then the state mandate.
Yeah.
They mandated you have to.
Right, and so we're coming off and there's, there's definitely an appetite to do something online, the question is like, do we do hybrid still? The, the other problem is too, you know, we're not getting as many people to come in person to any sense of this stuff.
I mean, for our meetings, I enjoy the hybrid meeting, I know if someone has a comment, I mean, you can.
Yeah.
You know, if people have. Still are uncomfortable due to. You know, pre-existing conditions and they don't wanna be in public.
Yeah.
You know, I think where it creates. The big issues is in the big meetings.
Yeah.
You know, that's where, that's where it becomes a problem if you have. You know. Budget meeting with, you know, fifty people present, you know, it's, you know, it's just trying to maintain order.
Well, that's, that's the tricky part because, you know, they open a lot of these things up for public hearing. But then you have people outside of that process who want to overwhelm the meeting.
Right.
That's, that's always.
You know, they have to, you know.
Yeah.